This conference will now be recorded.
We do have a quorum present, and I would ask that Mayor Pro Tem, if you would, would you please lead us in a prayer, sir?
Sure. Father, thank you for the freedom we enjoy tonight as we come together again to assess the items before us. We ask that you grant us the wisdom to act in the best interest of all of the citizens of Hazlet. We also ask for your continued protection for our city staff, our first responders, our teachers, and our residents as we continue to cope with the COVID-19 pandemic that risks the health of so many of us. We also ask for your blessing as we move forward from tonight's meeting. Amen.
Amen. Y'all please join me. We'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think everybody's up on all this, but I'm going to run through these virtual meeting best practices just in case there's somebody on who has not been on before. 3A, please be sure that your microphone is muted when you first join the meeting as well as when you are not speaking. This cuts down on the background noise and feedback for everyone. 3B, during video conference and teleconference meetings, the purpose of the chat function is to have a list for the chair to recognize speakers and for communicating technical difficulties or malfunctions. The chat is not intended for conversations during official meetings. 3C, participation, excuse me, participants should be sure they are recognized by the meeting chair to speak and state their name and address prior to the meeting, prior to speaking. And we do that in our in-person meetings also, so when you do introduce yourself, just give us your address so we have that in the record. Number four, citizens' participation and comments. Diana, do we have any this evening?
No, sir. No, I do not.
Okay, let's go on to boards and commissions. 5A, discuss, consider, and act to make appointment to fill place two of the Hazlet Library Board.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration this evening, we have an appointment to Hazlet Library Board Place Two. Ms. Kathleen Moore, who is also on the call this evening, has applied. She is not a resident of Hazlet, but she does reside in the Northwest ISD. She is a retired library media specialist and holds a Master of Library Science. She has passed the required background check. And on the library board, there is currently only one other non-resident serving on the board. Staff does recommend that City Council appoint Ms. Moore to service Place Two of the Hazlet Library Board for the remainder of the term through September 30, 2022.
I thought I was a member. I live in Hazlet. My address is in Hazlet.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, just because you have a United States Postal Service address that says Hazlet, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're in our city limit, and I did verify that. And the only reason that was mentioned is because the library warrant has certain criteria about how many non-residents can serve in it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Questions, comments from council?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Ms. Moore, I was just curious how you, how you came to find out about our library? Did, I know that some people actually inquire about the library before they move to this area, but if you don't mind sharing with us how you became, came to know about us and what made you decide that you'd like to join the library board?
Okay, sure. I've been a librarian for 30 years, and I've just retired. I retired in Texas, but now I just retired in Oklahoma and moved back here to be closer to family. And so when my daughter was out looking for a house, she saw, oh, mom, they have the cutest little library in the city of Hazlet. So, we got to look at, and we love it. And so then I started attending, and then I got a membership, and then I saw it on the website, the library website, about the opening needed for the library board. I thought, oh, I would love to do that. So that's how it came about.
That's such a great story. Thanks for sharing it.
Sure.
Anybody else with a question or comment?
This is Mayor Pro Tem. I'd just like to say it's very gratifying to know that we can get applicants as qualified as Ms. Moore for our library board. I think that says a lot for our community, and I congratulate her for coming forward and be willing to serve.
Thank you very, very much. It's my honor, and I'm looking very forward to it.
So who wants to be brave and make that motion then?
As the Mayor Pro Tem, I move to appoint Kathleen Moore in Place Two of the Hazlet Library Board for the remainder of the term through September 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
This is Harold, our second.
Thank you, Harold. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Welcome aboard, Ms. Moore. We're excited to have you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, on to 5B, discuss, consider, and act to make appointment to fill Place Nine, Alternate Two, of the Hazlet Parks Board.
Yes, Mayor and Council, for consideration of appointment to the Parks Board, Place Nine, Alternate Two, is Mr. Christopher Gray. He is a resident of the city of Hazlet. He's an engineer by trade, and states in his application he is passionate about the future growth of the Hazlet community and ensuring Hazlet families can enjoy the outdoors that Hazlet has to offer. He did pass the required background check, and staff does recommend that council appoint Mr. Christopher Gray to serve as Place Nine, Alternate Two of the Hazlet Parks Board for the remainder of the term through September 30, 2021.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion then.
This is Councilor Morrow. I move to appoint Christopher Gray to Place Nine, Alternate Two of the Hazlet Parks Board for the remainder of the term through September 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Clark, second.
Harold, second.
I got Clark first. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote then. Warren, Rob?
I think this is another great example of qualified people wanting to serve on our boards and commissions, and I really appreciate it, and I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Gray, if you're on the call, congratulations. Welcome aboard, sir. Okay, let's go on to items of community interest, a couple here to cover. 6A, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality has recognized Hazlet's water system as superior. This is a culmination of the efforts of the city engineer Travis Ottenasio, Public Works Director David Rogers, Public Works Supervisor James Tucker, and the entire Public Works Department. Jim, do you have anything that you want to add to that in the way of kudos?
Yes, I do. I just think it's been an effort for the last two or three years to get the system improved. I appreciate council approving the projects. It's, uh, it's really hard dealing with TCEQ. They're very particular on their requirements, and they just don't give this rating to anyone. And I believe, you know, Travis and David and James, the rest of the Public Works Department did an outstanding job getting this superior rating, and I can't wait to have the signs go up.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we're all equally proud. Anybody want to add anything from council? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to six. Go ahead.
This is Mayor Pro Tem. I was just wondering, where do the signs go?
They'll be on the entrances to the city, so Avondale-Hazlet Road, Harmon. We'll put it on Westport Parkway. Then we have on FM 156, the two locations, we'll have to get text auth permission to put those signs up. But every entrance to the city will get a sign.
Awesome. Well, please, please pass on the entire council's congratulations to everybody involved. I know it was a, it was a team effort, Travis, and then makes you look good, makes everybody else look good when we get this kind of recognition. So thank you very much, sir. Onto 6B. Go ahead.
Kudos.
I didn't mean to cut you short. Anything else you wanted to say? All right, 6B, early voting will be held on April 19th through April 27th for the May 1st, 2021 general election at the former Hazlet Elementary School 501 Schoolhouse Road. The last day to submit a ballot by mail is April 20th, 2021. Contact Tarrant County Elections at 817-831-8683 for more information. 6C, annual spring cleanup event will be Saturday, May 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon behind the fire station, and there is a flyer attached in your, in your agendas for that. That finishes up the items of community interest. Let's go to seven, staff reports to update on active items, projects, and event recap. 7A, update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issues. Kurt, are you doing that?
Yes, Chief Mays.
Chief Mays, you have it, sir.
All righty, we're getting to Mayor and Council. We are still in phase two of opening Hazlet, but we are in the process of evaluating the situation and leaning towards returning to normal operations on May 1st. Again, we are watching the positivity rate to help guide our decisions. We've, we've got to make sure that everyone has all the protective devices that we've purchased and systems in place before we would begin to reopen. But just to recap on the numbers, in February, we had 25 positive tests, and in March, we only had 18. We had 42 that recovered in February and 29 in March. And if you looked at the numbers, all of our reported cases, there's only four positive remaining in the city at that last report. Still just holding at one death. And in our county area, we had 42 positive last month and only 18. So again, the numbers are trending way down. We're kind of waiting to see what happens with spring break and is the test continue to roll in, but we're just beginning our thoughts and planning processes. In the next phase, the City Hall Court Window Library would be open to the public from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. In-person meetings can occur, but we would still prefer an appointment. The Community Center would open to the programs, exercise classes, and for the senior adult mills on Thursdays. Special event permits would be allowed upon approval. We would still follow the mask policy for all city buildings. However, there would not be temperature check or contact tracing logs filled out. Boards and commissions would be able to host in-person meetings, but at their discretion. I'll emphasize that point. At this point, you are still allowed to be via video conference, and I would ask Rob for any updates on that.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Governor's last extension of the statewide disaster declaration for COVID-19 was March 6th. So I would, we anticipate that he'll further extend that tomorrow or the next day. He's been doing that basically every 30 days. And so I will update you when I receive that information. And that's, that's really all I have. Just expect that that will be further extended, and I'll let you know as soon as that comes in. That's all I have unless y'all have questions for me.
No, very good. All right, let's see. The facility maintenance personnel will continue to disinfect the city offices and park restrooms. HSA will be starting up their play this spring and back to normal operation, including having vendors. Adult softball, girl softball will be allowed, adult softball will be allowed starting back May 1. The girls are already in progress. The Fire Department still has the one full-time shift personnel that is still working one to two shifts a week at the Hearst Vaccination Site, giving shots and showing support from the city of Hazlet. Not for sure how much longer that's going to happen. They're starting to kind of wind down up there, so we'll, we'll just monitor that. And as you know, the statewide mask order was lifted. Businesses are fully, but they do have the right to require masks. And finally, just reminding citizens wanting the vaccine, you should contact Tarrant County Public Health or pre-register at tarrantcounty.com/covidchat. End of report.
Thank you, sir. I have a question to start off, and I guess this is really for council. With the, with the reopening of the city, what is council's thoughts or what are your thoughts on, on us going back to, to in-person meetings v. remote meetings? As, as the chief mentioned, the option rests with the boards and commissions that, that I think if we continue in this same vein, they will have the ability to meet in person after the 1st of May, and I just wanted to get an update from council on what, what your thoughts were on us meeting in person.
Mayor, I have a question. I guess I may have misunderstood the chief. I thought he was considering that we would reopen May 1st as opposed to June 1st. Kurt, have we, are we definitely doing that May 1st thing?
No, ma'am. This is just, we're trying to give everyone as much time to plan. So June 1 was a number, a date I had thrown out a couple of months ago, but as we've seen the numbers decline, we're just starting talks now that the soonest we would even consider would be May 1. So I think the mayor's asking if May 1 were to become the date, what would y'all want to do regarding in-person meetings?
Okay, great. So, so Mayor, my response is I personally would prefer to wait till I get my second shot and the waiting period after that is passed. I'm waiting. I'm hoping to get called any day for that, but that's just my personal preference.
And that's, that's why I'm asking the question, because much like with the city going back to work, we're trying to, with, with the thought process that the city administrator and the chief are going through, I think we're trying to get everybody as comfortable as possible with the environment to which they're returning and, and not make anybody uncomfortable or feel like they're forced to participate in a meeting setting that they're not wanting to do. So I didn't mean with the question to indicate that I was pushing one way or the other, but I do think that staff needs a little bit of time to prepare when we do finally go back to in-person meetings. And again, I'm not pushing one way or the other. Anybody else want to weigh in or?
For me, I would, I'd prefer to stay remote until school is out if possible. That, that's what I would vote for.
Okay.
This is Mayor Pro Tem. I would, I would wonder if any thought had been given how we might socially distance up on the diocese or is, do we have the capability to have the Plexiglas dividers between seats? Or has anybody thought about that?
Yes, sir. Diane and I have already purchased those items. They are in council and actually set up as you, as we speak. They're already between all the seats.
Well, personally, I'm fully vaccinated now, so if others wanted to do it, I would consider it. If others wanted to lay it, I'm all for that, too. I'd be happy to do that if anybody wants to continue virtually, and I'm not sure that that's not what I prefer. But if others wanted to go back, I think I would at least consider it, especially if we have dividers in place so that we can socially distance without, you know, actually being six feet apart. You know, I think we should probably continue to wear masks for a while anyway, and but anyway, that's my personal opinion. I'd be anxious to hear other people's opinion.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
This is Harold. I'm fully vaccinated. I'm comfortable, but I want everybody else to be comfortable also. But until everybody is comfortable.
Jessica, any thoughts that you want to share? And if not, I certainly understand. I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm flexible. I think my only preference would be just being able to get vaccinated before I go back. But that's, that's my only preference.
Well, we still have the capability, and I think we talked about this probably almost a year ago, to, to have two or three of us, well, I've got a quorum in the room, but we could have, you know, two of us that could, could come in remotely, and, and we could rotate that or however. So what I would ask is give that some more thought, and maybe we can, in our update, in our next meeting, we can fine-tune that a little bit. I'm, I'm fine if, when is the last day of school, Tanya? Is it toward the end of May, middle of May?
It's May 28th, and I, and I'm also fully vaccinated, and I have no, I'm also flexible. I just try to err on the side of safety for that reason, but yeah, May 28th, and, and I'm also open.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, well, if y'all are okay with that, then, then think a little bit more about it, because we probably hit you cold with this, and in our, our next meeting in April, we can discuss this further and, and take everybody's input and come up with something that everybody's happy with. Is that, is that okay with everybody? Thanks for the update, and Jim, thank you for, for contributing there. 7B, strategic plan implementation status report.
Yes, sir. In September of 2019, council held a retreat for two days regarding team building and establishing pillars that they would want projects done within. All last summer during budget workshops and some other, other workshops, the council went over the strategic plan. They, they saw a lot about it, and then they prioritized projects they wanted long-term, medium-term, and short-term plan. They adopted, the council adopted the strategic plan on September 21st of 2020. And at that meeting, they wished to see an update regarding progress count, staff is making on implementing strategic plan. This, the report before you is, we made quite a bit of progress. I think two-thirds, approximately two-thirds of the plan, short-term plan, has been completed. The first projects we took on were the Blue Mountain Road East paving and John Day Road construction, which both have been completed. Total cost is $930.069 for that. The Blue Mountain Road East is beautiful. It rides smooth. The developer took out the sharp curve, although it did a little bit, add a little excitement to my drive. I much prefer the, the curve as it is present. And John Day Road, the school district, is static regarding the road opening because it gives them a route out of school, and also the chief is very happy about it because it lets the fire engine go down and take, unblock train traffic, whatever, and go help the elementary school and residents of LaTara. I think the mayor had established a goal of opening the road so we'd be able to respond to calls in the Hazlet Elementary School, which includes a lot of students from the city of Hazlet. So those are done. Those are quite an accomplishment. I'd like to thank everyone that worked on those projects. I really do appreciate. Those are two very large projects we undertook and we completed. Currently underway is the Hazlet Park street reconstruction. That's concrete rebar. The contract is awarded for $1,475.50. Some of the councilors tell you, construction is underway in the subdivision. I drove over there last week. Those concrete streets look nice. You probably got a picture of them. And they're working on it. Also, it takes Sharon and Barry includes those. Once that project is done, and Travis can tell you when, although we're construction projects, so he's subject to weather, it's going to be really nice concrete streets in Hazlet, Hazlet Park, so we're very excited about that. And we're very excited the citizens reaproved, first approved and reaproved the street maintenance tax, which is underwriting those road projects. Tarrant County, we were going to spend $22,653 on kind of repaving to the S curve from the part of Avenue of Hazlet, the city of Hazlet. Tarrant County took that on themselves, and we didn't spend, spend a dime for that, so we saved that amount of money. You probably, you know, the firefight repairman position was one thing that was a priority for council last budget fund. I believe that person has started today. And they are, we now have three full-time firefight repairmenics that work each shift. That helps the city tremendously, having qualified people respond to a call for medical emergency or structural fire, et cetera. And that is something that I appreciate the chief being proactive on. I indicated that April 5th was the day we were giving the presentation, and he, and he met that. And you'll see later on, because we have full-time, three full-time firefighters, we got to adjust some personnel policies to account for their shift work, which is 24/7 every third day. And then equipment. Chief quarterback this regarding the equipment acquisition, and we have issued purchase orders for the fire department utility eight replacement, the water one-ton truck, and the water part one-half ton truck. And that currently weighed on delivery, but we've purchased those. And we have a purchasing, we're on some kind of joint purchasing agreement with the county or HTAC or whatever, can't remember, chief notes. Wes has worked on the RFP for the architectural services for the, kind of conceptually, design a city center campus. I think those are pretty much almost due, or if not, all due pretty soon. We had to rebid the Community Park Upper Trail to meet budget. And I think on the next agenda, we are having a council through the request for a bid for the fire station parking lot. Like I said, this has been a really good project for everyone to work on, all these projects, and I gave them just general direction about a deadline, and then they all exceeded and were far, far more responsive than, than I expected, and we, we got most of those things done. Strategic plan implementation is an ongoing process. We are continually working on it, and we're trying to check off everything on the strategic plan we can in the short term. I plan on giving you an update September 30th regarding, hopefully we'll have even more progress, and we can have pictures of stuffs completed. So, you know, I really thank council for giving us guidance regarding the strategic plan and prioritizing as they did. And that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. This is the mayor. I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring up real quick. We do have a couple of members who, who are residents in Hazlet Park. Have either of y'all received any feedback from your neighbors about the goods and bads of, of what's going on in there? I know it's inconvenient, but hopefully when it's all over, there'll be an improvement. So I just wondered if either of you had anything you wanted to share with us on that?
Yeah, the neighbors I've talked to are excited about the progress, and they've done a really good job of allowing, you know, one side open, and they built some little, some sand up so people can get up on the, the concreted part already. So I haven't heard any, anything negative from, from my neighbors.
Yeah, I agree. I haven't heard anything at this point, so.
Great, thank you. One last thing, and then I'll, I'll open it up. I'm sorry to hog this. Chief, can, can you go over a couple of things? I think one of the things I would like to, to bring up about hiring the third firefighter is when we hired the first two, what, what those two gentlemen were doing was working 20-hour days, Monday, Wednesday, and the other one working Tuesday, Thursday. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt.
That's correct.
But, but what we have now with the hiring of the third firefighter, we go to the classic fire shift of 24 on, 48 off. And in addition to being there for their shift, there's a lot of other things that I, that in a casual conversation with the chief, and then I was over there the other day when they were doing their, their practice on tearing cars apart. It's kind of, kind of fun to watch them with their, their hydraulic scissors or whatever they call them, and the jaws of life and all those kinds of things. But there were several comments then made about how they, they thought the training would probably be more readily available with the three firefighters there, you know, well, one firefighter there on call all day long. So if they weren't on a call, weren't doing routine stuff, we could be training some of our volunteers. So Kurt, run with that for just a little bit and tell what else we can expect to see or maybe subtly behind the scenes we won't see from having these three guys on.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's huge. For, there are so many tasks that have to be managed, from station, equipment, and apparatus upkeep, along with responding calls, that some of those tasks will be pushed down for those gentlemen to manage during their shift. those gentlemen to manage during their shift, allowing Stephen to focus more on the big picture items and the fire prevention. With a lot of construction going on, there's inspections, a lot of questions is coming in. So it'll allow him to get back to doing some of those duties while overseeing those three. They will, you know, it's just the leadership, the ability to make sure the right truck and the right apparatus respond is so important. Those volunteers come up there at all different times of the day. And what is so awesome about these three individuals is they love to train. And so they may be out there at a 7 o'clock, 10 o'clock. Flav has told me that he stayed up till 4:00 a.m. and he's finally told him, I've got to go to bed when he used to work the weekend. So when volunteers know that somebody's there, then they're willing to go up there and hang out. And that's what we have to have. One person does not constitute a full crew. And so it will just create some synergy for people to come up there, hang out and put a, put butts in seats, as we like to say, in case we get a call.
Anyone else with a question or comment?
This is Mayor Pro Tem. First, I guess there was an item on the list, Jim, you didn't mention, we probably ought to claim credit for, and that's the intermodal panel replacement. Or at least Travis said at the last meeting that that was complete. But I didn't hear you mention that as.
I apologize. I apologize. Yes, that was completed a week and a half ago. It looks good. And the company did the work, did a really good job. So Travis should be congratulated. He designed it. He did it. He inspected it. So it's a good thing. I'm sorry for the oversight.
No, not a problem. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we added that to the list. And Chief, can you tell us who the three paid firefighters are?
Absolutely. So A shift will be Jeb Morgan, who retired after 20 years with Lewisville firefighter paramedic. B shift is Dennis Selzer, who retired 27 years from Skokie, Illinois firefighter paramedic. And then Flavio Delnu, who is a firefighter EMT. Flav has been with our department for over 10 years and he has served as a lieutenant for the last five. So now he gets demoted to engineer to get compensated.
Does this change anything with our ability to work with Fort Worth on a reciprocal agreement?
No, what they require is three firefighters on the apparatus 24/7. So this is, it's a start. This is a journey. And, you know, it's a huge, huge first step. So super excited for this.
Anybody else? I do want to, I do want to add something to my comment. It was extrication training. Is that the right term, Kirk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me, let me draw you a picture, folks. What, what happened on that Saturday? And they were there all day. The department decided to try to emulate or to duplicate the accident that we had on 35, just north of downtown Fort Worth, right before the big ice storm. So what they did was they brought a semi-trailer in, crammed all kinds of cars underneath it. They were pushing cars underneath it and jammed them. And then I believe the chief was out of town. I believe Lee Godbold was, was the head man that day. And what he would do, for example, is he would point to the car that was furthest in under the, under the semi-trailer and say, okay, I want you guys to get me the brake pedal off that vehicle. So they'd have to devise a plan and figure out how they were going to cut brake doors, whatever they were going to do. I can't even begin to explain the complicated process. But, but to watch them, you know, spin their wheels mentally and then start the process. And then guys would get stuck crawling through a car that's all smashed in and people would have to help them. And it was, it was gratifying to see our guys learning and at the same time, you know, getting better at what they do, both for the rookies that we had and for the seasoned folks that are already qualified. It was, it was great refresher training for the seasoned guys. And it was, and, and there were, I believe, at least two, two women in the, in the new class, might have been somebody from out of town that was there. But our new young lady was there also. And it was, it was, it was neat to watch. Sorry that everybody didn't get to witness that. So I'm sorry for belaboring that. Anybody else have any questions about the Strategic Plan Implementation Status Report?
I think I have a question. Oh, I have a question. I hope it, I hope it pertains to this subject. Were the repairs on Main Street considered part of the?
That also were outside. That's not, well, it's a, it's a capital project, but it's not in a strategic plan. It's on the other side, just like the tennis courts. Those are not included in the strategic plan. Those are, has always been very flexible as things come, come forth and we have money to fund it. But no, neither of those projects are in the strategic plan. But they're being, I guess, accomplished.
All right, then let's, let's slide on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the March 15th, 2021 regular city council meeting minutes. Anyone have any comments, corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, this is Hilborn. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Clark, second.
Clark, seconds. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Number nine, resolution ordinance and action items. 9A, discuss and consider an act regarding Resolution Number 006, 2021, authorizing the filing of eminent domain proceedings for the purpose of obtaining the necessary right-of-way and easements for use by the city for the construction and maintenance of the Alliance, Texas Hasslet Accessibility Improvement Project and for other public purposes permitted by law. Is this Rob or Thad or who's doing this one, Jim?
Well, whoever crossed up.
This one's me. I'll start.
I think we'll let Thad start and I'll join in as needed, if that works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution is very similar to one you saw almost two years ago now. That original resolution of necessity covered the entire project. But as we got to 100% design and got Phase 1 closed out, we had some parcels. We actually dropped one parcel from Phase 2, resurvayed several. So it made sense for us to come back with only a Phase 2 resolution of necessity for condemnations on those parcels that we are not able to acquire through negotiations. As y'all know, we've got appraisals on everything and the process starts with the appraisals and the offers on that. Often, the owner of the properties have a different feeling about the appraised value. So the hope is we can negotiate through the remainder of the project. But due to time constraints, we know that we can't go on forever. So this would cover all parcels. It keeps it uniform as we did in the first one. We have several parcels we expect to get by agreed dedication. We also have several parcels we expect to be able to acquire through negotiation, but there may be five to seven parcels that don't fall in that category. So again, this is a statutory requirement. Sorry for bogging down your rather light agenda tonight with a, all of the legal descriptions had to be included with the resolution. So Rob did the resolution and I compiled all the fun stuff behind it. So again, this is a very specific action. We're not, we're not condemning anybody tonight. It simply allows us through this process to take that action if necessary. I'll answer any questions, but Rob had something he wanted to add on the, the recommendation.
Sure, thanks, Thad. Yeah, and, and council, just so, Thad did a good job in his explanation. We're, we're going to proceed to make every effort to acquire these easements and right-of-way by agreement with, with every one of these property owners. We're required by law to do that and we will continue to try and do that. But on any that we're unable to be successful to acquire, then, then that's what this resolution is for, so that we can proceed if necessary at that point. As Thad stated, this is a statutory requirement and the statute actually says that the motion itself has to be made with specific motion language. So the suggested motion that's at the bottom of the staff report, I would ask you to actually follow that motion verbatim, which does track the statute, required statutory language. And we're required to take a roll call vote, but since we're meeting remotely, every, every motion we take is a roll call vote. So that requirement will automatically be met. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try and address those now.
Any questions from, from council to any one of these gentlemen?
This is the mayor pro tem. Just one curious thing. I noticed that the property on the abandoned railroad right-of-way is shown as, I think, WPRR. And I recall at the time that the railroad abandoned that, that I think the consensus of opinion was that would be, that property would revert to the previous owners, which was, I guess, had become Hillwood by then. So I was just curious, you know, what happened? I assume WP must stand for some railroad name, maybe Western Pacific or something or?
No, sir, that is Hillwood. I don't know the naming on that one, but we are working with Hillwood on that piece. The WPRR is represented by Hillwood. So you're remembering is correct. That is Hillwood property.
Okay, great.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Anyone want to make that motion then?
Okay. I move that the city council of the city of Hasslet authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the right-of-way drainage easements and temporary construction easements described in Resolution Number 006-2021 for public use in the construction and maintenance of the Alliance, Texas/Hasslet Accessibility Improvement Project, consisting of the reconstruction of Avondale Hasslet Road from the western city limits to FM 156 and the construction of two new roadways from FM 156 to IH 35W and from Intermodal Parkway to the new road extension from FM 156 to IH 35W. And further move to adopt Resolution Number 006-2021 as presented. The record vote on this motion applies to all units of the property to be condemned.
Is there a second?
Morrow, I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams? Did we lose you, Harold?
I'm back.
Okay. We're voting on the motion.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. 9B, discuss and consider an act regarding ordinance 007, 2021, to approve amendments to the following sections of the city of Hasslet personnel policies. Section 2.6, Categories of Employment. Section 2.15, Resignation. Section 3.3, Callback Pay. Section 3.4, Overtime Pay. Section 3.7, Termination Pay. Section 3.8, Breaks. Section 3.9, Meals. Section 3.10, Certification Pay. Section 4.2, Vacation Leave. Section 4.3, Personal Leave. Section 4.4, Sick Leave. Section 4.6, Bereavement Leave. Jim, who's doing this? Did you penalize the chief?
The chief is being penalized and Rob and did the legal review. So make sure we weren't doing anything against Fair Labor Standards Act. So chief will lead off and Rob can add what he wants.
And then at the very end, I at least want to get a nod from Marcy that she's okay with this too. But chief, you've got the nod.
Okay, trying to get through this. This was a very daunting task to, it was exciting to add the new personnel and what a headache it was to create all these policy changes. So I did my best to try to write you all a thorough report, being as descriptive as I could. But this is going to be my Cliff Notes version of the report. Because we created the full-time firefighters assigned to work a 24-hour shift, they will have a different work period compared to all other city employees that work a 40-hour work period in seven days. This created the need to update the city, current city personnel policies that had verbiage that was specific to the 40-hour work week period. And we had to add language that would, that reflected the new 106 hours in a 14-day work period. There were conversations for paid leave that had to be added, including accrual rates, maximum hours earned, and a maximum amount of unused paid leave upon separation from the city. There was changes to the meals and breaks policy. Again, employees are given a specified amount of time off during the workday for the employees not assigned to the firefighter 24-hour shift. So that means they can leave the city during that given time and go get something to eat. Firefighters assigned to the 24-hour shift are allowed to take breaks and eat meals anytime during their shift. But the key difference is they can't leave the city, for they must be ready to respond to an emergency anytime during their shift, even if they're eating dinner. And I will say, trust me, I've had left many of good cooked meals at the fire station to respond to a call, only to have to come back and microwave a steak. Not very flavorful at that point. So the big one regarding the overtime policy, it is, it's important to understand how the FLSA work periods are calculated. I tried to give you some examples of that. But Jim, Marcy and I agree that using the 106-hour, 14-day work period will work best for managing payroll. When I presented the budget last year at the workshop, I used option number one for my calculations for a firefighter engineer. That was $50,000 base salary and halftime pay rate for that 164 hours scheduled overtime, which equaled $1,404 for an annual salary of 51,404. That's the way that we had done it in Colleyville that, that I was somewhat accustomed to. So since then, during this journey, I've learned from my peers that, that some things have changed and a better way to manage payroll was to decrease their annual salary and then pay them at the time and a half rate of 164, which better reflects the way the ordinance is written. So this math worked out to $51,425 of an annual salary for a difference of $21. So again, we believe the money's budgeted, so there is no impact to the budget for these decisions being made. One of the things that it is important to note that this policy states that paid leave will be counted as hours worked strictly relating to the scheduled overtime only. So hopefully I covered the other scenario in my report. This is common amongst our neighboring cities and it is part of how Ms. Kara White wrote the policy is using the verbiage from some other cities. So again, this is nothing new that we're creating. It's just the way that we think will work best for Hasslet. And then the last thing is certification pay. And then the last thing is certification pay. We currently budgeted for certification pay of $100 for a paramedic. What I am asking tonight, that we add to the certification pay to get in line with what a lot of our, all cities pay some sort of a certification pay. Again, I think it's important that we just stick to advanced training and technical, technical training. That's what we should compensate somebody above and beyond. What you normally go to fire school does not cover this level of training. Again, hazmat tech pay, we're right in the middle of an intermodal hub transporting God only knows what in and out and through our city. So it's important to have those, you know, trained people able to respond. And so that would be $50 a month for somebody that has their hazmat tech cert. And then the technical rescue cert is a combination of certifications. So everything starts and ends with rope training. So they would have to have ropes one and two or rope tech. And then any of the other two, two of the other four trainings. So structural collapse, trench rescue, swift water tech. And I just left what the other one was. Well, I don't even know where I put it now. Simple, there's cert pay. All right. What was the trench rescue? Thank you, Bob. I didn't put that in my bullet there. So, so you would have to have two of those four with ropes in order to read, get the tech rescue training. Again, we're a part of the NERO, the Northwest Emergency Response Organization, a bunch of the little neighboring cities. We have to all pull our resources together. Again, you know, somebody gets the equipment there, but we got to get the right number of trained people in that technical category to do it. So I feel that it's important that, that as we try to contribute to these scenarios, that, that we compensate these people for their extra training. So again, the tech rescue is $50 a month. So it would bring the total, the most that someone, that a firefighter could make would be 200 a month in certification pay. And I believe that is my quick review of all 12 documents that needed change. Rob, you have anything?
No, sir. Appreciate the background and everything. And just as Jim said, and you actually, you said my partner, Carol White, is our personnel guru. She worked with chief and staff on this. And then also, I know there was some internal review, Jim and Marcy and chief all together to make sure that this is what was intended and would work well. And let, let Jim and Marcy add what they need to there. But these changes all meet the letter of the law and work from a legal standpoint. Try to address any questions y'all might have on that. But I'll pitch it to Jim and Marcy now.
I believe I wrote that I'm in favor, the certification pay makes sense. It's very minimal impact on the budget. And we have some of the best people coming to your door when you're in need.
Marcy, does this cause any hiccups over the obvious of just having to change, you know, change part of your system to accommodate this kind of stuff? I'm sure that you were probably used to something like this in your previous positions. But is there anything that we need to be aware of that's unique?
Kurt and I met with our software provider and they are familiar with pretty much any of the scenarios that Kurt and his staff were considering. They do have other cities that use the same schedule that Kurt is proposing. And so they don't foresee any problems at all with us setting our system up accordingly. Stephen has already worked out an Excel spreadsheet to facilitate the time entry because it is a little more complex to determine. But with them being on the 14 days, that's in line with our regular employees are on a 14-day pay period. And so that will make payroll a little bit smoother. But it's basically just knowing what to enter when it comes time to enter. And Stephen is, is working on the spreadsheet that'll facilitate that. Everything else will be code-driven in the software. And if this is approved tonight, then Kurt and I will meet again with our software provider and make sure that we have all of the code set up appropriately for any overtime situation as well as the certification pay. And at that point, you know, as that certification pay is earned or overtime is earned, we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Anyone with any questions or comments to staff or anybody else with regard to this?
I have, I have one, mayor. So Kurt, on the certifications, are they, do they renew those annually? Or is it one and done? Or how does that work?
We have to, so the hazmat certification does require annual, eight hours of annual CE training. It is a state certification. The technical rescue is not required. Once you have obtained it, there's no CE's or reoccurring tests to keep proficient. However, we do have scheduled, once a year for us, we do high-angle rope rescue training. And as we find a way to get more involved with the NERO group, we just haven't really had the full-time people to be able to get them into the training. So we will start integrating in with the NERO group who does do annual training. So we will just insert ourselves that way.
Anybody else?
Mayor pro tem, I have one question. And Kurt, your statement on that, you know, parenthetically, you said, this will be a little hard to follow when you were talking about option two. And you were right, but I tried to wade through it anyway. But I did, at the end of it, I was still not sure is, do I understand correctly to say, is it true to say that a weekday is no different from a weekend day, is no different from a holiday to what shift works? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So and second question for Rob. Now that we're opening up the personnel policy for this discussion, can we, is it permissible to discuss other aspects of the personnel documents?
Yes, I don't think we can necessarily act on any of that tonight because the ordinance before you is limited to the specific sections that are in the ordinance. So.
It's only those sections. All right.
So, I mean, we might, well, I guess we can always during future, I mean, you can always outline something during future agenda items for us to bring back. I don't know if that helps at all, but yeah, I mean, we, I think you're, the item is for amendments to personnel policies. So like the, what's presented are just the sections in front of us to actually act on tonight.
Okay. Warren, I'll echo that. I think if any council member has a, has a question that has arisen as a result of this view, review and the updates that apply to the, the fire shift workers, if you're ready, we could certainly put those on an agenda in the future, in the future agenda item later in this meeting. I sense, I sense the city attorney's reluctance to give us a green light. So I would rather just echo his comment and say, let's just put it in future agendas. We can bring it back as soon as staff has done their research and is prepared to, to, you know, address any issues that any of us might have. I took a couple of notes myself. So I think there's probably, open the door for a couple of comments and questions that we all might have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else with, with this ordinance, any questions or comments you want to make? If, if, if everybody's comfortable, I would entertain a motion then.
This is council member Mario. I move to approve ordinance 007-2021 amending the city of Hasslet personnel policies as presented.
Is there a second?
Mayor pro tem, I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hilborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you all. 9C, discuss considering act to excuse mayor and council absences. Anybody have one coming up? Okay, Kurt, did I cut you off there? I think I might have cut somebody off.
It was me just saying, thank you all very much. Looking forward to this next endeavor.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I believe, Jim, can you verify we do need to go to exec tonight?
Yes, we do. We have some several issues discussed.
Okay. Executive session, the city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551071 of the Texas government code. Additionally, pursuant to the provision of chapter 551 of the Texas government code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in 10A, section 551072, government code deliberations, easy for me to say, about real property. We'll adjourn the open part of the meeting at 8:02 and I'll see you over in exec shortly. Harold, I don't see, I'm just checking. Are you on? Are you back up with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all here. Let's reconvene the open part of the meeting at, I've got 8:23. Number 11, consider, take action resulting from executive session, there is none. Anyone have anything for future agendas? I should know this, Jim. One of the things I would like for us to check into is, do we have any certification pay for any other employees that, that we need to review? And that's, you know, Public Works and some of their water and sewer certifications, something like certification for a permit tech. I, I just don't remember off the top of my head. I haven't looked at that recently. So if we could just review that and report back whether or not that's worth looking at. And I'll take your word on it. And anybody else? Warren, did you want to add anything at this point?
No, I'll continue to think about the item that caught my attention when reading through that personnel policy. I'm not sure would really benefit us to attempt to change it due to we're a small organization. But I'll just think about it. I'll maybe bring it up next time.
Okay. Anybody else last, last chance on future agendas? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 8:24. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a nice evening.
See everyone soon.
Oh, Zags.
Good night.
Night.